And concerns of inappropriate language being used well with the cheerleaders on an ongoing basis. This is not an example we want from our coaches and advisors at I S C three sixty one. On July thirteenth, I replied, for both issues, I would like to see documentation of conversations. Conversations happen, any disciplinary action that came out of each supposed infraction. And on the accusation of inappropriate language, I would like to know who made the accusation and when. Because even in a court of law, everyone has a right to face their accuser. Bill responded with, Jessica, all the issues were basically verbal and observation on my part regarding issues with COVID rules and guidelines. Language issues and concerns have been ongoing, and at various times over the years, I have verbally informed you not to swear well with the cheerleaders. And recently, we got very credible information on using inappropriate language on a daily basis, which the district was no longer going to condone. All names will be confidential. I can honestly tell you, I remember one time when I had my mask on my chin and Bill went like this and I pulled it up. Regarding the language in my entire fifteen years of coaching, I don't recall any conversations about language. I'm an educated woman. I have a master's degree in health services administration. I'm not stupid. I would have made a change if a conversation had happened. It's a joke at this point with the girls. They laugh at me because I'm usually swearing at myself or saying or doing something stupid. Is that always appropriate? Probably not. Okay, I get it. But I would never swear at a kid. And I want to point out the difference. There is a difference between swearing at somebody and just saying a swear word in general, especially if I'm talking to myself. And the girls, they think I'm funny. If the language was this big of an issue, why was I never spoken to about it and had it documented? In regards to the district is no longer going to condone inappropriate language. Have you ever heard any of the other coaches talk to the teams? I'm fairly certain none of them can say that they've never sworn at a kid, but all of a sudden it's an issue with me. And if you're no longer going to condone that kind of language, there are other behaviors that have happened within this administration. And I will point them out if I have to, but I don't want to sink to that level. But there are other things within this administration that have happened and have been done. And I'm wondering, you don't condone swearing, but you condone those kinds of behaviors? And if you want to know what they are, I will say them, but I'd rather not.
You are not allowed to say them here.
It's public record.
No, as a, you cannot, so there's, there's a lot of laws that direct how public or perform at a school board session goes. And if it's at a specific person, so everything so far you said about Bill Mason so far is factual and communication based?
Yes.
Yes. However, once it goes past that, I gotta cut you off. So I'm just giving you a heads up. You can go back to him and have the time from when I started that.
Okay, that's fine. And like I said, anything that I have noted is public record.
And also, I do apologize. One more thing, not to interrupt and be too big of a jerk here, but we did lose internet, so I just wanted to make you aware
Oh, okay.
That they're trying to fix it, but right now you're only talking to us.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you for letting me know.
It's all the, it's all the board members that are here anyways.
All right. Thank you for letting me know. Throughout this process, your own policies have also been violated. When Bill called and told me they weren't hiring me for the position, I was never informed that the decision wasn't final until it went before the school board. According to Minnesota State Statute one two two A dot three three, it is the school board that declines to renew the coaching contract of a licensed or non-licensed head varsity coach. If that is the case, why has the job already been circulated on Facebook and via email to all school district employees as an open position? Also included in this statute is a part that says, the existence of parent complaints must not be the sole reason for the board not to renew a coaching contract. I must assume that, because I don't know, that it was a parent that was the credible information about the language issue. I feel that this boils down to retaliation. Retaliation for my pushing back against Mr. Grover and Mr. Mason last fall, when I came before this request, this board to request that the cheerleaders be allowed to travel with the football team. This is exactly what I said was going to happen in my remarks at that time. I said, if I'm not offered the position next fall, let it be known that it will not be because I don't want it. It will be because this administration does not like to be challenged. Sorry. I sent you all copies of my remarks from that board meeting. I have performed the duties of football cheerleading advisor to the best of my abilities for fifteen years. I've used my own time off from my job to take the girls to camp and attend autotune games. I've spent hundreds of dollars on various bows, palms, candy for praise, decorations, et cetera. I don't do this for the pay and the recognition. I do it for the love of the sport and for the love of these kids. Sorry. It doesn't stop when the season ends. I have written countless college recommendation letters, been a reference for job applications, helped girls with homework, talked to their personal issues when they needed an ear, and the list goes on. I'm not ready to be done. And I feel like I have more to give. And just because of a few people that don't like me, or don't like the fact that I challenge things, I'm being driven out. I would ask that the board take this into account and my longevity in this position and my dedication at this program and allow me to continue to do what I love.
Thank you. I ended up back in.
Here.
Are we gonna have the same mic issues though? Probably not. Well. Yeah, I muted, but we're on, uh, which one did you log in to? You wanna, somebody wanna test this?
Testing, testing.
You can use some.
Somebody that's on Zoom.
Does. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So who, by rocks?
Uh, motion by rocks. Do I have a second?
Second by Joanne.
Second by Joanne. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to point out is on number seven, the joint powers agreement. Just so that the board is aware, it's typically about this time it gets renewed for a year. There's a few items we want to clarify, so it's only being, in essence, renewed for a couple of months here to get some things on the city and our side. Not canceling or anything like that. It's just clarifying some issues, updating. But the problem is, if we don't renew it in the city and the rec, the day it expires, there's no rec commission, and that's bad. So we're just renewing it until we can get a few questions answered and some things straightened out, and then I'll be, come back to the board. So we just have to push it forward if that's the way to say it, or we get some answers on a couple of clarifying pieces.
Do any board members need clarification on anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The consent agenda carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to action items. Resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. I'll entertain a motion.
So who?
Got a motion by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second, Joanne.
Second by Joanne. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, where a school board policy seven oh six establishes, excuse me, establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point oh three states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools, I S D three sixty one, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Falls Education Foundation's grand grants for Falls Elementary, nine thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Falls High School, five hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents. Bronco Athletics, two thousand three hundred seventy dollars. I have a motion by Jen and a second by Joanne. Is there any further discussion? Help me out here. Are these, are these all roll calls then, or are these all?
This one.
This one. All right, we will do a roll call vote. I'm still getting used to what's roll calling after a year of pandemic, yeah. Bruce Ravelling?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Beach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. The desks here are pretty good. Let's see, okay. Action item number two, resolution adopting the school district's fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. I'll entertain a motion.
So who?
I got a motion by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second, Joanne.
Second by Joanne. Further discussion? School board resolution adopting the school district's fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Whereas to qualify for a long-term facilities maintenance revenue, Minnesota Statute subdivision four states, a school district or intermediate district must annually adopt and approve a ten-year facilities plan by July thirty-first for commissioner approval. Whereas the school district has developed a ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan consistent with the law. School board member Jen Windows moved the resolution adoption and the motion was seconded by a school board member Joanne Smith. And upon vote being thereon, the following voted in favor of the motion. Bruce Ravelling?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Beach? Oh, sorry, were you, did you say discussion?
I don't know. Do we need to?
That's a good point. Sorry to cut everybody off right there. Am I to just screw it up? Is there a discussion on that?
You can have discussion.
Okay, sorry about that. I started a little prematurely there. Discussion?
I don't have any particular questions. I just didn't know if there was any.
No, there could be.
Okay.
Good call. Yeah, there could be.
All right, sorry then.
Appreciate that. Any discussion? Okay, sorry, I'm gonna start that over again since I interrupted it. Bruce Ravelling?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Beach?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Okay. Whereupon the resolution was declared duly adopted and adopted the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-one. Okay, action item number three, approve non-renewal of Jessica Crosby, football cheerleader advisor for the upcoming twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two football cheerleading session. I'll entertain a motion.
So who?
Got a motion by Rocks. Do I have a second? Got a motion by Rocks. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jen. Further discussion? One thing, though, that I would like to say is that this is the approval for the non-renewal. Jessica will have an opportunity to request a hearing, public or private, and then that's where we would go into more in depth of what she would be bringing to us. So this is not a human resources review right now. So I just would caution, I'd tell you, proceed with caution in the discussion.
I want to ask for clarification.
Sure.
Remind, tell me what you're saying. Come with that again.
Uh, so what happens now is we will vote on this, assuming that it votes to non-renew, that the action item passes. We do not have, there's a process that has to be followed. Kevin can elaborate on that a little more. But it basically at the next school board meeting is when she can request a hearing. And it can be either public or private at her discretion, and then that is where we would, where she would have the opportunity or we would have the opportunity to overturn it or whatever we decide to do.
Or, or discuss details.
Or discuss, yeah, in details, because then at that point, she's had the opportunity to decide whether it's a public or private hearing. And then she gives consent for that, like if it's public, then she says it's okay for us to talk publicly about it. And it has to be done in that specific order.
In statute, when the board, when the board non-renews a, a coach, not talking, terminating during the season, non-renews, you have to notify them within fourteen days. They have a right to ask for reasons in writing, and then they have a right to a hearing of the board. It's not a hearing, and use an example, like a teacher that would be terminated has a different type of hearing. You actually have to have, not tenure, or a tenure teacher, you actually have a court recorder and everything else. And they actually rule and give a ruling to the board, which typically a board would go to. This is a chance for the employee to, you know, again, state their side and can ask questions and again, you know, how much we say. For the most part, usually if a person A complained, doesn't mean we have to, you know, I don't know how the right way to say it, name the person, but you have a right to respond more. It is public. If she wants it public, it's private if she wants it private, because it is a personnel issue. And so you make a decision and they have a right to hear it. That's, that's a coach's right.
As a, as a new member, does the district have a policy whereby if they have concerns, allow a coach? They, they call that coach in, they discuss the concerns. And is there, is there, and is there a period of time where they're allowed to correct those, make those changes?
There, there is policy for the most part in any employee, not just, it is very clear, there's specific coaching policies where they're only one-year, you know, annual contracts, not technically, even though, you know, we have to follow the statutory language. But it lays out clearly where they're not technically ongoing. Of course, there are all, there are caveats, you know, obviously you can let someone go, you know, at any time, you know, if it's blatant enough type deal, you know, breaking law. But good practices, obviously putting things in writing, you know, and not against verbal warnings, this and that. The, the level, you know, what I'm saying, you know, from a coach is not the same for a teacher as it would be. Doesn't mean they both shouldn't be treated, you know, correctly, appropriately, things like that.
Any other discussion? That was a good question. Okay. Okay, no further discussion. I have a motion by Rocks and a second by Jen. We will do a roll call vote. Bruce Ravelling?
No.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Beach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
And Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
It passes for one. Moving on to committee and administrative reports. Melissa Tate, elementary principal?
I don't, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Grover. I don't have any student numbers for you, obviously, because we'll have to be staff. I will say, though, that we just very recently got three new students to the district, one from a neighboring school and two moving into the district, so that's exciting. We had K through five summer school session that ran June eighth through July first, and that was pretty successful. We had probably about sixty kids here for that grade. And then we also ran a summer preschool session, and that ran from June fifteenth to July eighth. And because of the short notice of that program setup, we didn't have as many kids as we probably would have liked. And there was certain requirements that the kids had to meet to be able to attend that program. So we hope to be fed up next summer with, uh, summer legislation funding that's provided. At Falls Elementary School, I have been working on just getting our letters training organized and set up for preschool through fifth grade for next school year. We will be doing a book fair at our open house this year. That's new. And we're doing that as another option for family engagement, and we plan to have our title teachers set up in there to help kids find good fit books and meet with families and that sort of thing. And then we're just, you know, doing behind-the-scenes things, working on our early out schedule for the year, which will incorporate a lot of our letters training that we'll be doing. And then we'll be doing monthly social emotional learning training with staff as well.
Thank you for that report. Tim Ederson, secondary principal?
Again, these numbers are soft, like Missy said. Our current enrollment right now is at five seventeen, and that puts us twenty-one down from last year this time. Right now, the high school staff, we're operating out of the elementary school. We don't have any power at the high school. We hope to get it back into the high school's fraternity, but we haven't been able to get all transcripts and everything out. And, and that phones, our phone's over here, so we've been unable to operate, even though we haven't been in our building. We also have had summer school. We had three weeks in June, and we now have three weeks in July. And we've got twenty kids in the high school program and about sixteen in the six through eight program. And it's credit recovery, and the kids have been working really hard, and it's been, it was a good turnout, and we've got a teacher in each of those rooms, so it's been successful. And we are also looking into, you know, planning for next year. We're looking at S E L, the social emotional learning. And we're looking at Move This World and to see what they can offer. And we're also needing tomorrow to look at our P B S program and how we can do some things to revamp after having about a year and a half off from that. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Tim. Catherine Grover, superintendent?
Just a few things. One, one thing I would like the board to at least consider here, and because the room's busy and timeframe is, we were informed last week, for the most part. We're supposed to get some guidance from Department of Education here by the end of July. But for the most part, what's coming out is there's not going to be a lot of guidance going forward for next year. We know what the CDC's kind of recommended. Vaccinations are twelve and over at this point. And so what I'm prepping us on is we're gonna have to make the decisions locally on what we want the elementary, what we want, you know, the different places to look like. So I want to see what they actually say and what they put out, but they've told us that for the most part, it's going to be local control. You know, what do you want to require, what, you know, recommendation, obviously, even at the high school level, and I'm just speaking. You know, people have a right to be vaccinated. People who want to wear masks have a right to wear masks. If we're gonna require anything, that's a different story. You know, now the elementary, you know, twelve and under, not able to be vaccinated now. So it's probably going to be a, you know, larger conversation and question. Do you require, is it optional? Do you allow staff that are vaccinated not to? Like you said, we're, I don't know what they're gonna exactly say, but we're being told we better be ready to make, you know, our own decision.
When is that gonna be?
They say by the end of July. And so I'm thinking, I'm just throwing it out there, early August, you know, we're probably gonna need to, or August sixteenth, depending on how, I think that's our meeting. Be ready to make a, you know, decision, and so we have some time, obviously, to get things laid out and planned and whatever. But I, I don't believe they're gonna come out and say it has to be this way in the elementary or for, you know, the twelve and under group. And so recommendation is obviously to wear masks. Whether we require or, yeah, you know, obviously, health reasons would be a different, you know, if someone can't wear a mask, or are we just, you know. Those are things we're gonna have to talk about. I'm just prepping the board. And I'm not gonna supposedly make a decision. We'll go through my eval here when we go into closed session. Would like the board to think about goals for next year as far as, you know, what, what we want to set. Typically, we'll go through the review and then talk about a process of what are, what things you want, want me working on. The other request, and, and I guess it's more for discussion right now, but, and if, if the board is supportive, I will bring an actual action item in a specific date for the August meeting. But Missy and the elementary are asking for another in-service day. So we're saying preschool through grade five, roughly the beginning of November. The reason we don't have an exact date is if the board is, yeah, we will support that. We then have to work and see exactly what day is available with the company. It's, it's with the letters curriculum or letters program that they're gonna take on and train in, and.
What's the letter for them?
Um, it's that reading.
Oh, right.
Instruction and reading, like the mnemonic days.
And so they need, ideally, they would have after the first unit, which would be roughly eight weeks in, okay? They would have a training. Then their second training would come on the in-service day in January. And then the third would be the, technically, the start of the school year. And then things will, will have some of our own staff trained for year two, so that we can kind of do it at our own pace and, you know, even early out time. Otherwise, they slow, have to completely slow the pace and spread the whole first, you know, semester for the whole first unit, because they need to have a training.
Yeah, for each unit, there's a, a day of P D and so to stretch, and it's only eight sessions in one unit, so to stretch that out from September to January would not be fruitful, would lose engagement for sure. And so if we could have one like the beginning of November, that would give us enough time to get through unit one, then we can get through unit two, have our January training, get through unit three.
And it's not something we've done typically in the past, where we've asked just for an elementary day. And speaking with Tim, we really don't have, you know, a specific item to be trained on, you know, for the high school. And so it's a, you know, there's, I mean, we can run high, you can still run buses. I mean, we can be able to turn out, you know. We could, you know, again, this is thinking outside the box. We could provide food, you know, like we did last year for the, you know, elementary center for the kids, you know, the night before. I'm just thinking, you know, it's not common where we've done it, but we could do it.
Are we voting on that now?
No, I, I'm just, if you're, for the most part, yeah, we, we can support. Missy will work with the company to find out the date, and then in August, yeah, August, we would come and ask, can we take November third or November, whatever, the specific day off for a P D day and get it out, you know, make the change to the calendar.
Well, phonemic awareness is extremely important. We need to learn it and I want for it.
I don't see any reason not to do it, I guess. Well, I guess I could see a reason.
Any other comments or thoughts or? Are you okay with doing part district? It's something we've never done, you know, other places have, you know, instead of, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm okay with that.
I have to go through the rules for that. It makes sense.
Yeah, as long as there's no, I know rules where, like technically breaking contract rules with the teacher or anything else, I guess I don't.
Well, both groups will be worked, you know. We will work and find, like you said, what they have available and bring it to you. And that's, that's all I have. I do have a deal for Dan.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Moving on to community ed advisory board, and Kevin has a report.
Yeah, so Dan, Dan left this for me. Summer program camp and benching had forty-four participants. Due to COVID money, COVID monies, we were able to refund the entire cost per camp, a hundred and forty dollars per camp, per back to the families. Football camp is being organized through, what's this?
Football camp is being organized through, says, through community ed, says our office. Attendance has been fairly decent. I believe they're, they're managing this week for another part. Ditto on Bronco Hockey Camp, which is going on last week and I think this week. Swimming lessons have been very successful, thanks to Gracie Bar for all of her work on that front. Upcoming, a soccer camp for August, art in the park, storytime, community garden, community garden possible day being planned. Held a music camp, which was open to grades seven through twelve, which was well-received. Open skating is taking place at Bronco Arena with one hour for figure skating and one hour for open skating, and then another hour for hockey. They're squeezing that in when there's extra ice time. Pals and tags programming. We continue seek out an adults with disability coordinator. We've generated little interest in the position and continue to look as always, look at ways we can bring someone on board who can provide the services to these members of our community. Dan's had a few meetings with four H, and we plan to partner on forming a stronger Lego League. Commitment to help be a feeder to the robotics program at the school. Shared resources will benefit our students in several ways. Lego League camp is free and will be held in early August. Adult programming continues to be targeted for the fall. If you know of anyone who has in the past or would, would in the future offer their talents to the community, that would be great, if it could be passed on to him. A larger CEAC discussion. Can we look at the role our board plays, possibly expand said role, possibly work to bring a little more energy, enthusiasm, and support? That's community ed advisory council. I should have thrown that in there. Looking at different ways, and I was at, I think it was the last meeting, and was, they're struggling to get the community ed group to come together. And then, and I think as always, any classes that people are aware of, that would like to try and offer, or someone knows of someone who would like to teach something, Dan's open to that info. But I know, I went to the last meeting, and yeah, they're struggling. I don't know if it's a post-COVID reboot or what, but not getting consistent attendance, you know. And so I believe the direction Dan was gonna reach out to each individual member, see if they're still interested or not, and maybe name new, you know, some new members and try and kind of reboot the board and, and go from there. That's what I have for Dan.
I remember about four years ago, I read through all the rules for community ed and the rec commission. I just remember that there was some requirements for that, so I might, might have to bone back up on it.
Well, in their meeting, it's just, you know, truly getting a looking group.
Well, you wanted to get that.
Correct, you know.
Well, thanks, Dan. Thanks for Kevin for reading that. Recreation Commission, who would like to speak to the rec commission? Any board members or bills here?
I'm here. We got our monthly meeting Wednesday. So we're gonna go with joint powers agreement, and like you said, we're extending it through September to work out some other details with, things we're looking at, both with Betty Burks from the city administrator, and then Stacy's had some questions too. So we'll get that worked out. And outside of that, not too much going on. Our city beach thing is we have no lifeguards right now. Very unfortunate. We had a couple, two lifeguards available come July. The other one was a hit and miss, week here, week off, week here. The other guard was just a first-year guard, never worked at the beach, so we decided we better not, better off not to have a guard out there. Typically have two guards on at one time. This younger kid would be out there by himself, but it's unfortunate with the hot summer we're having, and, you know, the camp host is leaving at, at the end of this week, so the city's looking for a new camp host to finish out the summer. So right now, there's nobody out there. And there was some vandalism in the moral bathrooms a couple of weeks ago.
And that is one thing Dan is gonna work on trying to, you know, rejuvenate or whatever, try and get another big lifeguard training session going, because both.
Dan and I talked, yeah, because we share lifeguards. They'll work at the pool, and summertime they'll work, some of them work at the beach. And so we share the, the same group of lifeguards, and we're just gonna do a little more recruiting and promoting the lifeguarding, you know, for this new batch of kids coming up. We're just, we had like three kids that missed the re-certification class this year, which would have helped, and the guards have to be certified. Their certification lasts for two years, and they gotta re-certified every two years. So if you don't get re-certified, you can't, you can't be out there lifeguarding, you know, so.
Is there any consideration of paying the back for the money they have to put into certification?
We did talk about that.
If they put in so many hours?
Our city beach committee talked about that, and Diane Hadmer was, she was looking into maybe asking, you know, Bremer Grant or something that would pay for certification class, which I think it's around two hundred dollars. As long as they work so many hours, they get reimbursed or, you know.
Do they get paid the same to the city employee that works like?
We're, we're ten, ten to eleven dollars.
For the amount that they have to. For the amount that they have to put out and commit to, I mean, it's a good thing to have long-term if they want a lifeguard at college or whatever, too, but a lot of commitment for.
A lot of responsibility for ten bucks.
That too.
I thought that's true.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, next we will be entering a closed session. The meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D point oh three, to discuss the district's labor negotiation strategy related to negotiations with local four seven nine eight, local five ten, and local three thirty-one, and to conduct performance review of Superintendent Kevin Grover. Will entertain a motion?
So moved.
By Rox.
Second.
A motion by Rox, second by Jen. All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. We are now in closed session. Okay, summary of the superintendent's review. Superintendent Grover managed our district through a pandemic and adapted well to the COVID issue. This impacted his ability to fully achieve some of his goals. Areas for improvement include communication and being spread too thin. And his strengths include adapting and being flexible, knowledgeable about his role, knowledgeable about district finance and community involvement. And the board is very grateful for Kevin's leadership to the district. That's the summary, and then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got a motion by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second by Rox.
A second by Rox. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.